Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order at 5:32. The approval of the minutes of the meeting of February 1, 2023 minutes.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes for February 1, 2023.
Second?
We have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'd just like to note, Mr. Chair, that Tony Dastro is going to be filling in as the alternate for tonight. I've heard that discussion off the top of my left ear. I just want to make that officially acknowledged.
Great. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. Subdivision and land development. A primary final land development plan for the yards at 1147 Littitz Pike and Soto's. Modification requests. The owner of 1147 Littitz Pike proposes replacement of the Stockyard Inn. Of the Stockyard Inn, building addition, the former Jesme Deluxe Grill restaurant structured and some existing parking areas with five-story multifamily housing building, including 226 units, 12,200 square feet of commercial space oriented towards Marshall Avenue and on-street and off-street parking spaces. The inn's original structure will be relocated and repurposed in this property's northeast area. The developer has requested the following modifications of the Soto. A ordinance section 265.3M4 street trees. B ordinance section 265.33M5 minimum collateral to allow use of multi-stemmed trees. C unit address deferment to a later later stage of the land development. Shall I go on with B?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to note that this project came before you one time before for a sketch plan review. And tonight it's a vote for final, final plan. And we have a set of conditions that we can go over when the time is right. And I think I will leave it at that for now and invite the development team to come up and say a few words about the project.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Ben Lesher with Parcel B Development Company, formerly called STL DevCo. Yeah, just excited to present our proposed land development plan for the project. And, Mendali, I wanted to start with some highlights, just overall, which I think you all have seen before, but just to give a little refresher. And then I'll kind of turn it over to Ben Morton with RGS Associates to kind of get into the details. So, yeah, you know, obviously, one of the big aspects of this project is that it's located close to the train station and just really excited about trying to bring a high-density mixed-use development near the train station and all the wonderful benefits of that and also just create a nice kind of entry gateway into the city. Of course, we're planning to provide over 200 units of housing, which as you all are sure well aware, there's a huge need for that in the city. Also specifically smaller units, which I think we have, I want to say, over 70% of the units are smaller and that's responding to some of the housing studies that have been done recently. And then, of course, we have a goal to get up to 20% of the units, which equals 45% in this case affordable at the 60% of area median income level. Thirdly-
Can you repeat that last statement again, please?
Yeah, we have a goal to provide 20% of the units in the project to affordable households at or below 60% of the area median income and then the rents would also be affordable at that level as well.
Thank you.
We also have the opportunity to preserve a historic resource and adaptively reuse that. And so we're keeping and relocating kind of the southern half, southern end of the restaurant building and that will become a clubhouse and amenities for the residents to enjoy. And then lastly, just kind of pulling it all together, we just have a nice opportunity to really redevelop an underutilized parcel and try to activate the street in that area as much as we can. Hopefully it becomes a catalyst for maybe other projects in that area. And also just thinking more broadly throughout the county and whatnot, if we want to really preserve our kind of natural areas and farmlands, this seems to be an excellent place for development with all the infrastructure in place around it. So, anyway, just excited to talk more about it, hear your comments, concerns, questions, and I'll let Ben kind of dive into the details of the land development plan.
Thank you.
So, hello, I'm Ben Morton, landscape architect and project manager at RGS Associates. And I too am very excited to be here to talk with you about this project again tonight. As was mentioned, we were here back in November presenting the sketch plan. And while the larger framework of the program and the design is largely the same as it was before, I want to go through and sort of reacclaim you with the context, the program and the plan, and then add in some other pieces that were refined and developed more in the final plan process. So, beginning here, just kind of zoomed out to give some context of where we are. You know, the project site's just off-center and saturated a little bit more at the southeast corner of the Littitz Pike intersection with Marshall Avenue and Keller Avenue, really one of the northern gateways into the city and located within a quarter-mile walk of the existing Amtrak train station. You know, at the moment, that walk is over the Littitz Pike Bridge, but we also have called out here where PennDOT is soon to be building a parking lot as well as a pedestrian bridge that would allow people to get over to the train station without needing to go up and over the bridge. I also want to note that while it is in a separate municipality, just to the north of this site is Stafford Park, which does afford recreational opportunities, including various types of athletic courts and fields and playground area that, you know, and thinking about the benefit of mixed-use communities and having these community resources close at hand, that's certainly something that will benefit residents in this project. So, looking at the site, as was mentioned, there are two existing structures. The one on the right is the Jimmy's Deluxe, which will be demolished in its entirety, while the larger structure on the left is the Stockyard Inn, the oldest southern section of which will be relocated on the site and rehabilitated. I'll also call attention, I mean, we're surrounded by Marshall, our access and frontage is to Marshall Avenue, but as part of earlier phases of the Stockyards Office Park, you know, and two sort of access points were developed for this property that tie into that larger street network and those alignments are going to remain and help to structure what's going on to the site. I'll also just note that, you know, two are on the western border, you know, we aren't really right up against Littitz Pike, but it is a PennDOT property there with a stormwater management basin. So, as you can see on here, the purple building in the northeast corner is the relocated inn. And that location was, you know, selected to find a place that would keep the inn in public view without moving it to a place that was far more prominent than it had been in the past and where it might struggle right up against the Littitz Pike corridor to, you know, be at an appropriate scale. And then coming off of that, we have two new buildings, as was mentioned. Building A, which is sort of an upside-down L that is helping to complete the street along Marshall Avenue and then continues down the western property boundary and does also help to give some framing to the Littitz Pike corridor as you go over the bridge. And then Building B is, we'll call it a flipped seven, that is oriented along the existing access drive alignment into the site, helping to frame views as one drives into the site, but also working with the other buildings to create an open space core that also is right there as you're coming into the site as opposed to tucked away. Within those two new buildings, as was mentioned, there's 226 units of apartments primarily located on the second through fifth floors, though Building B may have a few units at ground level. Building A, the 12,000 square feet of commercial area is located along Marshall Avenue. The, and so those ground floor programmed interior spaces of the buildings are what you're seeing in the darker orange, whereas the areas of lighter orange are parts of those buildings where at the ground level we have parking that's undercover with the apartment uses above. We do have sufficient parking provided both out in the open as well as covered with some spaces mimicking an on-street parking arrangement along the interior access drives and we're also creating four on-street parking spaces along Marshall Avenue. In terms of bicycle parking, we have 10 exterior bicycle parking locations or spaces that are located at some of the different building entrances, primarily for visitors or users of the commercial space. And then there are 45 parking spaces for bikes either on the interior of the building or under the covered areas where other resident parking is located. And I'll also just note in terms of pedestrian improvements, you know, we've added sidewalks to the access drive alignments within the site to help, again, mimic a natural form of urban streets along with trees in a tree planting strip and then created, you know, many different routes to walk within the site, both along the buildings through the open space areas as well as an area to cut through under Building A to get you over to the Littitz Pike corner. Along Marshall Avenue itself, there's actually currently a gap of about 225 feet where no sidewalk exists. And as part of this project, we'll be reinstalling sidewalk along the entire frontage that will also get street trees and pedestrian scale lighting along the entire frontage. One other sort of transportation-related follow-up note, there was some discussion, and you can actually go back, Mendali, I'm going to speak to that screen for another moment. When we were here last, there was a question about bus service and we talked about that a bit. And we did follow up on the suggestion to reach out to Red Rose Transit. We had a meeting with them and they're interested and excited about the project. No commitment at the moment about bus route changes or bus stops, but it is something that as the project develops, they are going to have as part of their planning to see whether it makes sense to either divert an existing route or add stops that are closer to this location. So, that is out there as something that's being addressed. The two key places where, you know, details became more refined were stormwater management as well as tree planting. And so the, just highlighted here with the bright color are where the underground stormwater management facilities are. We are meeting the one-inch volume reduction requirement. And this site, unlike many in the city, actually does have a 50% release rate requirement. So, the peak flows in the developed condition will be only half that of the stormwater flows that exist presently. So, you know, that is a real benefit to the environment as well as to the city's combined sewer system that water would eventually get into. And there's, I think, about 3.2 million gallons of stormwater that will be captured and infiltrated each year by those facilities. Then in terms of trees, we are meeting the requirement for 15 trees along Marshall Avenue and Shade Tree Commission approved the configuration and species of those last month. And we also added in both our parking lot trees and our landmark replacement trees, 22 of the former and 48 of the latter. So, there's a total of 85 trees being planted as part of this project. And we do have a couple of the images that we had shared previously and shared with the historical commission that give a sense of the scale of the development and how it's setting into the context. And with that, I'd be happy to hear any comments or address any questions that you have.
Just curious where you expect to have the construction entrance? On Marshall Ave or on those internal streets to the site?
Let me double-check exactly where we've shown that and I can let you know. That is part of the erosion and sedimentation control plan. I do believe that the intention is to be coming off of the existing drives. Yeah, so the rock construction entrance is actually going to be, if you're looking at where the two driveways come into our site and there's the T-intersection, it's a little bit further into the site. Some of the pavement there will be removed and the rock construction entrance will be at that location.
Okay, so off Marshall Ave, turning right?
Yeah.
And thank you for reaching out to Red Rose Transit Authority.
Yeah, glad to do it.
Mr. Morton, can you speak towards the trash pickups? Where, how will that traffic circulate as well as emergency vehicle services?
Sure, so there are three trash locations, trash enclosure locations that are identified on the plan. And we have modeled garbage truck maneuvers to get to those sites. There's one up by Building A that's in the northern end of the site that's meant probably to serve the commercial uses there and be close at hand. The other two locations are at the southern ends of both buildings. And based on prior experience with another one of Ben's projects, you know, there will be, the project management company or property management company will be addressing getting trash out to those locations rather than it being somewhere that tenants need to walk to on a daily basis. And then for emergency services, we did have coordination last summer with fire marshal and fire chief to walk through the various requirements particularly related to appendix B of the International Fire Code. And they were satisfied with both the apparatus roads in general and aerial apparatus opportunities. In particular, it might be a little hard to see on your screen, but some of our parking lot aisles are actually 26 feet wide to accommodate the aerial apparatus requirements of the code.
And one other question regarding traffic, loading and unloading zones for the commercial areas. Where do you envision that taking place?
The commercial uses here, we're not expecting any sort of significant deliveries. So, we don't have loading berths of that sort.
Yeah, can you go over that again, the relocation in the purple there? Of what, what building's that again?
That is the southern portion of the Stockyard Inn that exists now.
That's what I thought you said. Okay.
Mr. Morton, I have a question about the commercial space on the ground floor. First, are there any leads on what kinds of commercial may be suitable for those spaces? And just curious about the layout of the entrances. It looks like there's two commercial entrances on the interior of the site for that building, A, and then three on the streetscape side. In some cases, we've ended up with situations like the CVS at the corner of Lemon and Prince where they install the corner door, but then it's not desirable to use for that particular use. So, I'm just curious, you know, what is a use here that could be envisioned? Where those doors could be, you know, could remain operable for both street front-edge engagement as well as drivers who show up at the site?
Sure, I mean, I don't have particular insight on who is going to be coming in here, but our planning has been based around a combination of office as well as medical office. It is a good point that as the architecture of those four plans is developed, that we will want it to respect how both of those sets of entrances can function. I will say too that the, you know, along Marshall Avenue, because there's, you know, some slope along that frontage, part of what we were doing was creating some flexibility along that frontage with the grating right up against the building to have the potential for multiple entrances along a significant portion, although, you know, depending on the ultimate user there, that could be adjusted. I can certainly go over the modification requests now if that makes sense.
Yes.
So, we have two actual ordinance modification requests, both relating to street trees. And as I had mentioned, we are providing the required number of street trees, but we are requesting that some of them be able to be placed at less than the minimum 20 feet apart. And part of why we ended up here is that with the requirement to have one tree per 25 feet of frontage, given that we have an existing access drive, there's also utility pole and traffic signal mass that we have certain separation requirements from our actual area for, or linear footage to install the trees, I think, as I noted here, is closer to about 260 linear feet, which if you just divide it by the number of trees, puts us at less than 20 feet between the trees. And we worked with the urban forester to come up with a reasonable solution, which has us on the western end putting a number of smaller trees in a closer cluster formation and then maintaining that minimum 20 feet of separation kind of from the midpoint to the east so that we can have some larger trees in that area, particularly where we get to the inn and some of that open space where larger trees will have more room for their canopy. And then related to that decision, one of the species of trees selected that is smaller is the service berry, as referenced hereby its botanical name, Amalanqueer. And because those trees, when they're in a tree form and single stem, as would typically would be required for a street tree, you know, they're even smaller than we might want, part of our discussion led to the idea of having multi-stemmed trees selected and that would allow them to have a bit more expansion. And really, actually, I think it could be an interesting aesthetic form as well, but they aren't sized in exactly the same way and so we can't meet the letter of the ordinance with the two and a half inches, though in talking with the urban forester, there is a generally accepted practice in the nursery trade on how you convert a multi-stemmed tree to the equivalent single stem. And so that's what we will be following with that if approved. And then lastly, we are also requesting a deferment of assigning unit addresses to the building permit stage when we'll be in a better position to make sure we have unit numbers properly assigned.
But the total was 85 trees, right?
Yes.
Any other questions from the commission?
Just a quick question, I know that you guys had done a community meeting a couple of weeks ago. I'm just curious what you heard, if there was any concerns that were expressed during that meeting or anything else you'd like to share?
I mean, there was certainly a lot of interest in the development and I think general support for having this type of development at the gateway. One, one thing that I'll note is interesting is just the difference in focus that somehow the municipal line can make, that there were certainly some Mannheim Township residents who were there who were much more interested in any impacts to vehicular traffic than our discussion with either this commission or city staff has been. And I think that's often the framework that development takes in that municipality. And so that was kind of the language that, you know, a concern that was raised, though, you know, we've addressed that to the satisfaction of the city.
Any public comment?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no public comment at this moment, I just, I had another question for Mr. Morton. I just wanted to clarify that both pedestrians and vehicles are permitted on the access drive that goes towards the circle. Is that your understanding that the previous land development provides rights for both pedestrians and vehicles? Okay, I'm seeing a yes from the legal counsel. Okay, great, thank you. And maybe just one other question, I think I know the answer to this, but just for the, for the commission's knowledge, it looks like the amenities that you're providing here satisfy the recreational requirement in the subdivision land development, right? And that includes the clubhouse, the outdoor amenity area and the dog run and open space?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure, could you please approach the podium, just go through streaming?
Thank you, Mr. Morton.
Folks online can hear you then and introduce yourself.
Phil Hannigan, 300 block of College Avenue. I would ask the presenter if there's any controversy or concern about the yards project and the traffic that flows through the property adjacent and that circle and what kind of impact it might have on the businesses that are there and that are- and that are to the east of them.
So, as part of our land development submission, we did have a full traffic impact study conducted. And it is true that some vehicular traffic will go and use those driveways, but there's actually very minimal traffic anticipated to go truly all the way to the east and out the east. There will be some trips that go out, what's labeled on here is access drive C, though the bulk of the traffic is expected to go out of the access drive on this property. As was mentioned in Douglas's question, you know, there is a cross-access agreement that allows for traffic from the office park to utilize the existing driveway on this site, which it does, and, but we did not find any adverse impacts, you know, particularly over to the east in those businesses or within the functioning of the streets in that development.
I apologize, I had to step out. We can review the conditions of approval if that wasn't done. Well, okay. Mr. Kedro, could you navigate to the conditions, just so the room can see those too? So, there are five proposed conditions of approval. Number one is that the final plan and related construction documents comply with all city codes and regulations unless specifically modified or waived by the city. Number two, all easements and agreements shall be submitted for review by the city and recorded as part of the plan recordation. Number three, the developer shall submit a construction guarantee in accordance with the accepted opinion of probable cost in a form that is acceptable to the city. Number four, the developer shall execute a developer's agreement to the city's satisfaction. I think at this point, we're seeing a standard agreement, like we would provide for any development. I don't believe we've identified any additional language that needs to be added to that. And then number five, the developer shall address all the city's, to the city's satisfaction, all unsatisfied comments as provided in the comment letter on March 10th. And I believe those are primarily technical in nature and aren't substantive. Is there anything in the letter at this point that you're concerned about and are those conditions acceptable as well?
No, there's nothing in the letter that's of concern. And yes, those conditions are acceptable.
So, with that, and this is not to end discussion if there's still questions, but just wanted to say that Planning Bureau is recommending approval of this plan with those conditions and with the addition of granting the modifications as requested.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion then. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the final land development plan for the Yards at 1147 Littit's Pike, including Sado modification request, A, ordinance section 265-33M street trees, B, ordinance section 265-33M for the minimum caliper to allow the use of multi-stem tree, and C, unit address deferment to a latter stage of land development, as well that we will grant the above modifications and approve the final plan subject to conditions one through five.
I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Ready for a question? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion carry?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Mr. Morton.
Thank you.
B, request for unit address deferment for final land development plan at 800 South Queen Street. On behalf of applicant, E.L.A., has requested defer the unit address agreement to be processed with the architectural building code required review process rather than the land development plans. The various components of the building units will be more specifically depicted on the architectural plans and can be a seamless approval for assigning units/addresses.
Good evening. Cheryl Love with the LA Group. And this project was previously recommended for approval. We've been working through some of the conditions. We've wrapped up most everything, have submitted our agreements as well. They are ready to post financial security. We have a few last little remaining comments that we are working through with the city for some intersection bump out areas. And I think one or two comments that relate to the green roof from a technical nature, but otherwise, the plan has pretty much been buttoned up and we've met most of the conditions of your previous approval. However, from a address standpoint, we would prefer to defer that address request and action to be acted on during the building code review process as part of the architectural plans as well. They can be better linked together from the unit numbers and assignments as those architectural plans go through their final reviews with the building codes department. Otherwise, we are excited to get this project wrapped up, buttoned up, and recorded so they could move forward and be ready to begin their construction in the very near future. Any questions?
Douglas, can I ask, was my understanding we were going to try to get this changed? Where are we at on the process of getting this changed? So, we don't have to do this every time?
Yes, our intent is to change the ordinance so that we don't have to go through this. You know, we typically in the past have made amendments to the subdivision of land development ordinance roughly every, maybe three years or so, two to three years. And partly that is because we, as we implement the code, we learn from it. We generally accumulate a list of things that we want to change. And because of the process being a little bit laborious of going through council and advertising and some of the costs there, we try to do that all at once and coordinate it. We are probably approaching a point where we have enough of a list that we could do an amendment, but the additional twist is that we're also working towards a comprehensive plan that will be adopted hopefully later this year, which generally sets the basis for both land development code and also zoning. So, we've been biding our time a bit is the short answer.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
And the city staff's support of granting this.
Public comment? Hearing none?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for unit address deferment from the final land development plan for 800 South Queen Street.
Second?
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Ready for a question? All in favor, let it known be by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, eyes have it, motion carry. Congratulations, Ms. Love.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Redevelopment authority of Lancaster City. I guess none. Okay. Number five, comprehensive plan update.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a few updates here, although I don't have any presentation materials for you. As I've said at previous meetings, we are busy working behind the scenes, actually drafting policy. This Friday, we'll have a first, we will have all of our written policies drafted as of Friday. That's taken a lot of work over the last couple of months. We've also started moving into the, what we're calling the land use policy phase of the planning. So, that is actually creating the future land use map that will guide decisions around rezoning. We have part of the future land use map drafted and we have all of the land use categories established at this point. We're still refining some minor things. But very, it's a very exciting stage to be in. We're in the process of scheduling some meetings with, you know, large institutional landowners in the city as well to just begin some of the process around this future land use map. And we still are expecting to present the plan, policies, and all the maps in May at the Ware Center. So, that'll be May 24th is the public presentation for that. The other piece of news I wanted to deliver to you is, I had mentioned that we want to make the Planning Commission central to the review process for the comprehensive plan. And right now, the way that we're thinking about doing that is hosting a series of discussions with the Planning Commission after the May 24th event. So, this unfortunately will be during the summer. Hopefully, you weren't planning to take any vacations, but we'll have several meetings at least. Hopefully, most of you will be able to be in attendance. And we'll probably structure those meetings because there will be a lot of content to get through. So, I imagine there'll be a series of presentations and then, you know, question and answer from you all, public comment, and a documentation of all of that to further refine the plan and policies. So, stay tuned for that. We're still shooting for September, October roughly to be the adoption time. That may be flexible as we move, you know, further along in the year, but certainly we're looking for adoption this fall.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Smith, got a question?
Sure.
These meetings we'll have, the Planning Commission, are these going to be during our typical meetings, when we're doing other planner views, or will these be special meetings separate from everything else?
It's a very good question. I don't know that we've figured out the exact balance yet, and we may have to be flexible as we see that what development comes through the pipeline between now and then. If we need to set up special meetings, if our agenda is really that full, then we may do that. Or if there are other efficiencies that we can find in the process, I'll be all ears. But this summer will be busy for us.
Okay. Because the only other thing I was going to say then is if, if it helps us offload some of the demand for meetings, for us to bring back that like meeting in a box idea. I liked when I went to Andrew's house to discuss the comp plan for that. I wouldn't mind doing that again.
I appreciate that. We will definitely be creating an engagement strategy around, around the outreach. I think our intent in using these meetings as a central place for conversation is so that you all get to hear directly from the community prior to making a recommendation to city council. Certainly, we want the meetings to be accessible. Thankfully, we have a good facility with good room here, but we will have to do some promotion and encouragement in the community to really try to get people into this room and feeling comfortable to speak up and learn. There will likely be other communication strategies that go on alongside that. We're still working that all out. I know, you know, there's a chance we'll be attending some community events or that there will be some, like, literature that can be distributed. The website will be up and running with all the policies and maps posted on it as well. We're planning to have that up at the May 24th event for sharing. So, and of course, social media and other sorts of communications that we use standard.
It would be great if you could share some of the social media strategies with us and other folks who can help, you know, just spread the word and share, share that information through our social media channels, just to see if we can help, you know, create more engagement.
Yeah, that's a great idea. And as we start to develop that strategy, I'll try to, you know, think about how we can use you all as volunteers, if you're willing, to really help spread the word. So, thank you for that.
And Mr. Smith, what time on May 24th are we looking at?
So, we are looking at late afternoon into the evening. We're still figuring out the exact itinerary, but roughly between, you know, four and eight, you know, in that timeframe, there will be an open house portion, and then there will also be a formal presentation in Steinman Hall at the Ware Center, probably followed by another portion of open house too, just so people can mill about and learn from the materials we'll have on display.
Okay. Thank you, Smith. Other business, short-term rental zoning discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have tonight before you a rough draft ordinance, amendment, I should say, for the zoning code. And this has been based on previous discussions that we've had. I don't think that there should be any surprises here. For those of you not familiar with ordinance structure, there's generally a title to the ordinance at the top, which basically says this is an ordinance to amend the zoning code. And then there's a series of whereas clauses that give some context about, you know, our authority to do this and what documents we reference for guidance and, you know, what the purpose is. And then there's the therefore part where we, you know, name the code and provide the amendments. So, I'll just walk through this and happy to answer any questions. I do have some additional analysis and other materials that we can also look at too. So, section one of the ordinance. And Mendel, are there extra copies as well? I just, I want to make them available to anyone in the audience who would like. Okay, you got some. Thank you. Thank you. So, section one is to amend the definition for short-term rental. And it would start by saying a fully furnished, and instead of single family, that would be crossed out, and it would say dwelling unit, a fully furnished dwelling unit that is rented on a short-term basis by written contract. And the remainder of it remains the same. There's no additional edits there. The reasoning behind this, as we've discussed previously, is that there are cases where there are a couple of units above a commercial use, particularly in the downtown and mixed-use areas, that we believe would be appropriate for short-term rentals. But currently, the short-term rental definition is only applied to single-family homes. So, those kinds of situations would not be permitted. So, this changes the unit type that would be permitted and currently is only applied to the districts where it's permitted right now. Section two, so this is amending a footnote, and it says, it actually adds a footnote in the use table. And, sorry, it's a little bit out of context, and we can pull up the use table if that would be helpful. But the use table basically is the table where it says what types of uses are permitted in what districts. And then there's sometimes additional caveats. You know, it's permitted in this district, but you've got to follow this additional list of regulations. So, in this case, there's a list of several or handful of regulations that apply to short-term rentals. But the one we'd like to add is to say the dwelling unit must qualify as a single-family home or apartment as defined by this ordinance. So, we've expanded the definition to include unit type, but what we've done in the use table is we've specifically defined a single-family home or apartment as the two types of uses. We thought this was a better way than amending the definition so that we can use a common definition over time that could remain flexible and may change from different zoning districts potentially. So, here we've qualified where that would be permitted. In section three, I think I've said before, we basically accidentally required to, required a parking space for either one or two homestay bedrooms. We intended to say no parking would be required for one homestay unit and one parking space would be required for two homestay units. But because of the way the code is written, when you have one unit, you actually have the parking requirement and you end up the parking requirement and you end up with point five and then you round up and you end up with one. So we'd like to change that and be more explicit. So we've rewritten that part to say one for two bedrooms dedicated as homestay and zero if only one bedroom is dedicated as homestay. Um, I know the language one for two is a little, one, two bedrooms is a little funky, but it follows the, the logic, um, written out in the zoning code currently. So those are, those are the three changes. Um, they're fairly, uh, simple, uh, tweaks. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any comments, uh, from the commission.
I have a question.
Sure.
Does this permit for one, like an apartment in a multi-unit?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. So apartment in the zoning code is explicitly, uh, defined as one or two units above a commercial use. So this would not permit multifamilies to serve as short-term rental units. It would, uh, only permit one or two units. So I know it's a strange way of using the word apartment, but it's, it's been in our zoning code a long time. At some point, we're probably going to change that when we rewrite the entire zoning code. So three or more units would be considered a multifamily building and then would not be, uh, permissible as a short-term rental. A one or two apartment, uh, apartments above a commercial use. So if it's a two unit or a two-family dwelling, uh, where you have one family living on the ground floor and then one family living on the upper floor, two separate units, um, that would be considered a two-family dwelling and not, uh, two apartments. Yeah. The key is it has to be above a commercial use. So it's kind of your standard, um, small-city mixed-use situation where you might have, you know, a two or even a three-story building, a small building with, uh, you know, I don't know, pizza shop or something on the ground floor and a couple of units, uh, up above. There's a lot of these situations in the downtown, but unfortunately, these upper units haven't been utilized in many, many years. Um, and I think we're starting to see more interest in using those upper floors, but the, uh, economics are often working against people who are trying to rehab those units.
We may have talked about this before, but, um, section one, a fully furnished dwelling unit that is rented on a short-term basis. And then the next line, not occupied by an owner. So if a unit is occupied by an owner, what would that term of occupation have to be to be considered occupied by an owner? Like, I'm trying to think, if somebody occupies it for three days but not the fourth, would that still be considered like a micro-short rental kind of thing? Or would this just totally not be part of what we're discussing? Cause I'm just thinking possible loopholes for somebody to use that word as occupied in residential areas.
It's a good question and, um, I, I think the intent here is to say that when there is a short-term rental occurring, that there's an owner or manager that is not present in the building, that the short-term rental solely rented to that entity, um, to differentiate it from a homestay which has an owner or manager. I, actually I think that one's written to be explicitly an owner, um, living, uh, in, in the home. It's, uh, possible we could explore refining that to say, you know, during the scheduled stay or something of that sort. Is it, uh, is that the intent of your question?
Well, I don't wanna jumble it up too much. I'm just thinking that person who might go away for a month, all their belongings are not leaving that house, they occupy it, but they're not present.
Hmm.
So what if I wanted to go away to London and have business, but I want someone to use my home for those three months? What would that look like? Would that then be under this at all or is that just like, don't tell anyone?
If, if you're in, uh, a permitted zone and you get, um, a, uh, z, uh, letter of compliance from zoning saying, you know, you're, um, you're a short-term rental, that's basically, you know, what the, the zoning compliance letter is, uh, it means that we've reviewed the property and the conditions and we believe that you comply with the ordinance. That person could still continue to make that their primary home if they chose to, um, is, is my, my understanding. However, um, you know, during these stays, I, I guess that is something to further refine with our solicitor. Um, and let me add one thing here, cause these are all, this is a great question. Uh, we have scheduled a, um, executive session next week. I believe you've all been made aware of that, but I just wanted to make you and, and the public aware of that too. Uh, we have an executive session scheduled with our city solicitor to review, um, legal matters related to short-term rentals. Uh, there have been a lot of creative ideas from both the public and from the board about how we regulate short-term rentals. We've looked into a lot of those strategies and we believe most of them are not, uh, permissible in the state of Pennsylvania. But we want a, a chance for you to discuss that with our city solicitor and also ask other questions, maybe like the, the one you, you've raised, Mr. Willing.
But the short-term rental is just, that's less than 30 days?
That's right.
So if it was a couple of months, that would be a separate process?
If, yeah, if one stay was going to exceed 30 days, that would be a long-term rental.
Okay.
Yeah. And a short-term rental could serve as a long-term rental if they choose. I know that there are situations where, you know, you might have a visiting nurse or something and it may start off as, you know, three weeks and then they're there for three months. Um, if they have a transient dwelling license, uh, I checked with our, um, property maintenance and housing inspection group and, uh, a transient dwelling license does cover long-term stays as well. Um, but it also grants the permission for less than 30 days to occur. So there, there's a particular rental license that has to, um, happen for short-term rentals.
I'm more curi, this is not directed at you, Mr. Smith. This is directed to Mr. Sims and Mr. Young. Uh, I'm more curious if these changes would then suit your needs and if it's satisfactory to get your projects going.
Thank you, Joel Sims, Sims Architects. I also own, uh, 312, 318, 320, 4 East Walnut Street, right down from Lancaster Brewing Company. Um, if I can just address the issue that, that you mentioned previously regarding one or two units above a commercial space, I've seen as an architect personally, I've worked with a number of clients that aren't renovating because it doesn't make financial sense. Uh, I know of a space now that we worked on, uh, there's a commercial space below, uh, very, very well-to-do, person lives in one of the units, they're trying to sell the other. Uh, if you were looking at that situation where you had an opportunity to buy, um, a building that had a commercial space below and there were two units above, you might say, hey, I'll renovate this to live in it, but I can afford to make it work if I'm gonna go to Europe for two months. You know, but if not, then, you know, I can't really because I'm not here all the time. I have a client that's in Florida 10 months out of the year and he comes back. So yes, can he rent his own space for two months? I'd say that's a good thing. Um, my, I'm, I have a situation where I have a commercial space and I have two units above. Um, I don't think I'm technically in violation because I've taken my wife there. Uh, we drive 10 minutes from Anaheim Township and hang out. Uh, I don't pay myself. She loves it and it's actually good for the owners to be, you know, renting in a sense for a week or two because then they get to see the space. That's very common. A lot of times owners will go to short-term rentals, they'll stay a week or two and fix things up so then it's ready for the guests. So I would just say to the issue of, you know, having owners a part of it, an owner may say, I'm gonna stay there for two years, but if I sell it, I can make some money because somebody else can use this as a short-term rental. Uh, to answer your question, uh, it, it helps me immensely. I have spent so much money on my building, uh, in the last seven and a half years. I mean, I've got a sunken tub, I got a TV that comes down from the wall. There, there's no way I can make money if I'm renting it out on a monthly basis. So, uh, this certainly helps me and I'm very pleased, uh, if this ordinance goes through because I can rent on a short-term. I personally do two-night minimum because I don't like one night because it kind of brings people in and you don't know what they're doing. So two nights is, is a, is a great thing and that's typically what I would do, two nights or longer. Uh, so I thank you very much. I think this is gonna not just help me, that's a self-serving comment, it does help me, I wanna be honest, but I think it helps a lot of, uh, businesses that are in Central Business District and mixed-use. It'll, doesn't affect residential, so that still takes care of that, but it's gonna help a lot of people that are like with vacant apartments and they just can't make the numbers work, but they can in this situation. So I thank you.
Evan Young, uh, 213 West King Street, we've got Larkstone. Uh, this does, this would get me back on track to being financially, what do you call it, solvent? Um, what, something, something that I particularly like, the, like about this is that it does, for the mixed-use buildings, it does actually require that you have a commercial use in it. Uh, there's a building across the street from my store that recently converted their ground-floor commercial use into a residential and that is not a dynamic use of downtown. Like that's not how cities are supposed to run. If we're downtown, I, I want these buildings to be, to have varied and dynamic uses so that we have lots of interesting things happen on the street. It's making it hard, it makes it hard for a retail store to operate when you don't have a bunch of mixed uses, bringing people in at different times and, yeah, I, I'm in the middle of, uh, what is that Jane Jacobs book, Death and Life of Great American Cities? It's written 50 years ago and 60 years ago, super relevant. Uh, anyway, yeah, I, that's something that I particularly like about this is that we're, we're encouraging commercial use of commercial buildings and that's what I'm trying to do. My particular building has five commercial tenants that include a ballet school, an architecture firm, a recording studio, a bakery caterer, well, it's over two buildings, um, and, uh, and a used furniture warehouse space and my retail store. So like that is dynamic use and this, the Airbnb that I had set up upstairs that I have since shut down, um, like that was carrying so much of the overhead and it was allowing me to, it was allowing me to not raise the rent on my commercial tenants. I'm trying to set them up for success. I feel like that's my social responsibility in the city as a pro, as a commercial property owner, is to set my tenants, my commercial tenants up for success. And, I mean, I can show you my profit-loss. It's, I'm really in bad shape without this, so. And I, and I did also invest, it is difficult to renovate these upper floors. It's, it's crazy expensive and took me a year and a half and my entire retirement account to, to get one 800 square foot space, upper floor done. So, yeah, all right. Anything else?
And you would almost think with the amount of senior living buildings coming into the downtown, that if a son or daughter wanted to visit, their parents are in one of these places, it'd be very convenient for a place like yours, since many of these buildings are located in the downtown corridor, to have the ability to stay more than a night?
There is a, yeah, it's, it does help a lot of people. There's, my visitors really enjoy downtown. I, uh, I do a lot of things to encourage them to explore walkability because that's one of my pet projects, um, is getting people, trying to influence people to take advantage of the fact that we are one of the, are very walkable city and that we have a dynamic downtown that's filled with lots of interesting things despite the fact that we're not on a river or some other natural, uh, wonder of the world. We're like, we're an interesting place to visit and the reason we're an interesting place to visit is because we're an interesting place to live. And I'm trying to lean into that as much as possible and I just need tools to financially make my corner of it, my little responsibility of it, work. I got, I, you know, we live in a free market society and I, I have to, I have to operate within that. So I have to, I have to have money coming in. And, yeah, the, the short-term rental has really helped me, really helped me. Oh, and also I, you know, it's, I do think it's good that we're not expand, we're limiting, keeping it away from big apartment buildings like multifamily buildings, makes a lot of sense to me. I don't think that we should turn our apartment buildings into hotels. I, I think we do need more hotel rooms in the city, but I don't think that it should be at the sacrifice of, yeah. I try not to be too, lean into too many rules and stuff. But yeah, I, I think some of these things are smart and well-thought-out.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Young.
Mr. Smith, can you speak towards, um, or have you spoken towards public, uh, residents within this city and what ha, thoughts have they shared regarding, um, you know, maybe the changes to these amendments or just the short-term rentals altogether?
So we have not done large-scale outreach per se. You know, this is the, the primary venue that the public can engage in these conversations. And I think we've, you know, we've continued to hear from some dedicated residents, uh, who have shown up. Um, I have remained in informal conversation with, uh, a number of different residents for a variety of reasons, uh, whether it's, uh, you know, Mr. Sims for, um, the unit he's, uh, two units he's looking to use, um, or it's from other residents who are concerned about an illegal, uh, short-term rental on their block. Um, this has been a sticky wicket and, you know, we've, we continue to pursue enforcement, um, across the city. So I'm, because of those issues, I, I have a number of ongoing email chains and phone calls and things with people. Um, so I, I haven't necessarily hosted, uh, community meetings, but, um, continue to, I think here, uh, two primary messages. Um, one is that we need to continue to, um, fix our enforcement, our enforcement, uh, process and make that, uh, cleaner, more enforceable and quicker for residents when things occur. Um, I have heard from the folks who did not make the window of registration, um, that they're very upset with the process that we've, that we, the city used. Um, there's two sides to that coin, you know, they were operating without any approvals to begin with, so that's, uh, you know, that's one side of it. The other side is, you know, they lost a business that they were operating, which is financially, uh, you know, maybe financially difficult for them. Um, but certainly the city followed, uh, proper procedures in terms of adopting the ordinance and enforcing. And then the third group has been, uh, advocacy for short-term rentals to have more flexible unit types and that's really what we're addressing, uh, here this evening. Um, and I have heard that from a number of different residents, um, some who live outside the districts that we're considering here, um, but the city, uh, I think believes that limiting the, um, number of units, uh, to two, just two apartments, uh, is, um, in line with our thinking in terms of, uh, wanting to manage and right-size the use for the city, um, and put it in commercial places. So, um, you know, this, this policy really, um, achieves that. Yeah, I, I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, it is very helpful, thank you. Would the apartment use, would the usage of this above a, a commercial property with the two units, would it prohibit or prevent an owner occupying one of those units and then doing a short-term rental with the other? Or do they, would they have to do both as short-term?
Uh, it would not, uh, it would not prohibit them from doing that. They could live in, in one and rent the other, yeah.
Uh, I just wanted to make one comment. So I went to the zoning, uh, board to appeal because I got denied for short-term rental and there were, I don't know, six or seven, and there were a lot of people there opposed to a lot of, uh, short-term rentals in neighborhoods. I can just attest to the fact that nobody came to oppose my building. Uh, and the reason is, is because, you know, it's a, it's a commercial, I mean, I have Lancaster Brewing down the street, I have the Tint Express across the street, so, and plus, I spent a lot of money on my building, so, I mean, people love me, all the neighbors love me. I had an event space, a neighbor, uh, texted me one night and he said, hey, Joel, the party got kinda loud and I said, it won't happen again, you know? So they know, they have my number, they have my email, they call me, they talk to me, I know the neighbors. Um, so it's great. So, um, as a side note, because I got denied, I had to call my attorney, have him, have him, uh, appeal it, uh, I can tell you if this revision goes through, I'm dropping my appeal, there's no need, I mean, I'll be set. So that's great news because who likes to spend money on attorneys, really?
So he kind of touched on a question I had, what is the process for people who have been previously denied under the previous ordinance? Once we've updated it, do they just apply again?
Uh, yes, they, they would be able to apply. So Mr. Sims could, um, submit an application for zoning compliance if this ordinance were to be adopted, or, or Evan as well, yeah. for zoning compliance if this ordinance were to be adopted, or Evan as well, yeah.
Mr. Smith, two questions for you. The first one is, you said we have an executive session for, for us to talk to a solicitor?
That's right, the planning commission, yeah.
For the planning commission? When will that be?
So, that is a week from today at 6:30, yeah, 6:30 on Zoom, I believe.
On Zoom, okay.
Yeah, it's a virtual, I figured it'd be easier rather than making you come out, and, you know, the, I know we've never held an executive session, but there have been so many legal questions that have arisen from, from you all, and while I relay the information as best as I can, I really wanted you to have an opportunity to directly engage with our legal counsel. Executive sessions, of course, are permissible under the Sunshine Act. What we can, what we can do is, we can ask questions, and we can learn. What we cannot do is discuss any legislation, and our solicitor will go through this with you. He's going to be very strict about how we conduct the, the meeting, but I think it'll be really informative for everyone here.
Okay. And then, my second question for you is actually if you and I could maybe set a meeting, because I have some thoughts based off the township ordinance, the Lancaster Township ordinance, and maybe there's a way to get our ordinance and theirs to be a little bit more, like, cohesive, so even across the boundary, people have a pretty consistent understanding of what they got to do.
Sure, we can meet and discuss that, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I do have two other, one other short matter of business I just wanted to make the commission aware of. The city has engaged in a contract with C.S. Davidson Engineering Firm to assist with land development plan reviews. Up until this time, city staff has been the sole reviewer of land development plans, and we do have very capable staff to do all of that work, but the volume has been quite substantial. In addition to that, we have other planning priorities that have been placed on us, like developing the Conference of Plan, or Vision Zero, or the Sidewalk Program that maybe you've heard of. All of these are run by staff that also review all of our land development plans. So, all of us are wearing, you know, ten different hats and juggling, you know, maybe not as good as Evan, but, you know, we're juggling lots of different shaped objects, and it's, it's very demanding on us. So, what we've done is, we've, we engaged with C.S. Davidson, signed a contract for them to help with plan review for zoning, stormwater, and engineering, yeah, subdivisional land development review. So, letters going forward for new submitted projects will be on their letterhead. Those letters will be coordinated closely with staff, and Mr. Kajal will continue to conduct that land development process and review on behalf of planning. So, we don't expect much of a change in terms of substance, but I wanted to make you aware that going forward, you may see some difference in materials. C.S. Davidson is also doing construction inspection for us around the city, so some of the projects that are doing earthmoving now, they're on-site regularly, already inspecting, reporting back to us, ensuring that the requirements that you've all agreed to hold the developer accountable for are carried out in the construction phase. So, that has been really helpful for us to keep eyes on the ground. And that is all for other business.
Sorry, Douglas, can you just remind us what the process is for, like, when we want to adopt this, or if we, if we, when we vote on this, ordinance change, just for the folks in the room, so they can know what kind of timeframe we're looking at?
Yeah, great question. So, with an executive session next week, the next planning commission that this would appear on would potentially be April 5th. I would like to shoot for that date, because then we can get it on to a May council agenda. So, on, on April 5th, if this commission were to support the ordinance and make a recommendation to council, you'll all have to vote on it if we get to that point. We would submit it to county planning, they would review for consistency with their county comprehensive plan. Thirty days later, we would get that review letter, we would go to city council committee first and introduce the item, probably make a presentation and have discussion, and then it would have to go to two city council meetings for a first and second reading before adoption. So, if it made it to council in May, then it's possible it could be adopted by the end of that month, if all of the dates line up. I'll have to type this all out and count my days, because there's certain advertising requirements in the newspaper, et cetera, that we need to hold ourselves accountable to. You're welcome.
So, this is something we can't vote on recommending tonight?
That's what I was going to ask.
I mean, we've previously talked about this, this is just kind of the deep down, so.
Yeah, you, okay, good, I'm glad.
Seems absurd for me to delay, 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 you know?
Sure. Come on, let's go.
Or would it be helpful to have conversation about it next week, if that's with the solicitor?
Right, that's what I.
There are a couple of ways we can go about this. Certainly, there's no obligation to vote on this tonight. I don't see any reason you couldn't, but I would say that should be with caveats here. Let's see, let me think, if there are, if there are any caveats, just give me a moment.
So, hypothetically, Mr. Smith, we would have that meeting with the solicitor on the 22nd, and then we would reconvene as a group just two weeks later on May 5th?
That's right.
So, that would allow us to then have that conversation with the solicitor, at which time, are, are you able to take that, the feedback, or some of that conversation internally without us talking about it officially, and revise based off of just comments and thoughts that were at, taken during that conversation? Because you'll be part of it, so you'll hear the questions that are asked, revise these accordingly, which would then allow us to vote officially with a final document and no caveats on the 5th?
So, I'll just be crystal clear and say that this ordinance will not be discussed at the executive session.
Right.
We can ask questions generally about policy. If the city staff were to independently, you know, learn something through that executive session, and decide to come to you two weeks later to present a newly revised ordinance, we, we could have, we could do that, but it would not be in concert with any of you, you know? We would be making that independently. That is a possibility. You could also choose to, you know, recommend this tonight, and then add additional content if you want, but I certainly don't mean to, to pressure. I had hoped to have the executive session scheduled before tonight's meeting, but we weren't able to coordinate our calendars accordingly. So, I know it does feel like a long process, and I don't want to delay any longer than I have to, but, you know, different things need to line up before we can march forward.
And it's safe to say that this was probably vetted through legal counsel before it arrived on our tables today?
It has been since a legal counsel a couple of times. Yeah, I think it, it would be good, I think my preference is that city staff keep this as-is, and have you have the legal discussion. I want to empower you to learn through that, in case there are any changes, and then in April, make a vote definitively. I would say, regardless of other business being on the agenda, this is, will be our one action item, if it has to be the only one, but we should convene and take care of that.
Okay, makes sense. Who cares, makes sense to me. Any public comment, any further public comment?
So, if you vote on it on April 5th, you said, then it goes to council in May, and then it gets voted on in June?
I would have to double-check the exact dates. It's possible it could be voted on in May. The, what I haven't done yet is looked at the advertising requirement. So, we need to, we need to advertise for two consecutive weeks, no less than ten days, and no more than thirty days before the vote happens. So, I need to look at the calendar and see, what date do I submit, how many, you know, if, if my eyes are serving me well, I think council would be on the 16th, the second, sorry, council would be on the 23rd at the end of the month, which means if they are supportive of it on May 1st, which would be the committee meeting, then I would probably send it to the paper that week for advertising, and then I would advertise the week of the 8th and the 15th, and that would line it up potentially for a vote on May 23rd. But I would need to double-check all of that with our solicitor. Yeah, and that assumes county, you know, gets back to us in time in the thirty days for, with their review, but it, it does all look possible that the vote could happen before June.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool, that helps. Also, Douglas, I just want to say thank you for, like, it's been super interesting to see the things that you guys are up against as policymakers. It's been frustrating to see what you're up against as policymakers. It seems like there's a lot of really good ideas that don't work because of, of legal precedent, which I think is a huge shame, and, anyway, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that, and we are constantly frustrated with Pennsylvania law.
Good evening. My name is Walt Rowan, and I live at 24 North Shippen Street. I've been following this entire process of short-term rental, and Mr. Smith and I have been in conversation several times. I represent quite a few people in my neighborhood, which is an R3-zoned neighborhood, and has recently had several properties purchased as single-family units, and converted into short-term rentals intended to be short-term rentals by the new owners, but was not grandfathered, were not grandfathered in. So, I'd like to go through two, two categories for tonight. First is just a clarification of exactly what this change is meant to do, because I have quite a few people in multiple neighborhoods that are very concerned about short-term rentals, so I need to be able to clarify what I think you guys are doing. First thing I'd like to understand is that the original ordinance that's in effect today states that the only category of property that can qualify for short-term rental is a single-family unit, and that is essentially what's being changed tonight, that it is no longer specifically a single-family unit. So, in other words, a multi-unit, multipurpose, commercial and/or residential property, a component of that property could qualify. Is that correct?
That is correct, but only up to two units. I mean, so if the building has ground floor commercial and three units above, it would not be permitted, if, or three or more units above.
So, we're seeing just the part of the ordinance that's going to be changed. Additionally, however, there would be that clarification.
Exactly, and everything else would remain in effect in terms of, yeah, R3 would still not be permitted for, for a short-term rental, R4 would not be permitted, so, yeah, that would remain in effect.
So, there was a unit recently that came before the board on the zoning, which, now, it was a two-unit apartment, zoned as a two-unit apartment. This particular one happens to be in an R3 zone. So, in this case, this specific one, it's, it doesn't qualify anyway, because it didn't grandfather in. It was being used by a previous owner as two short-term rentals. But were it to be in a commercial district, in that configuration, the wording of this makes it sound as if those two units, one of them potentially, could qualify. It was talked about today, tonight, that the intent in the commercial-zoned areas is to maintain ground-level units as commercial, and therefore, the second unit, as long as it's two units, could be a residential, and would be allowable as a short-term rental.
Yes, that's right. And Section 2 of the ordinances is intended to clarify that. It says, "The dwelling unit must qualify as a single-family home or apartment as defined in the zoning ordinance." So, hopefully, someone says, "Oh, well, what's the definition for apartment in the zoning ordinance?" And they see it's only one or two units above a commercial use. I suppose, you know, there, there is, there's always another approach to the same end, and, you know, maybe there's another way that we could, we could write this to be more clear. What I haven't done is asked the solicitor, well, you know, what if we eliminated Section 2, and instead, in Section 1, we say, "A fully furnished, single-family home or apartment as defined in the zoning ordinance," and proceed on? That just puts the same language in a different place. That's a possibility as well. So, I could certainly put that before the solicitor and just try to arrive at the option that's most clear, I think, either one, but they're both achieving the same exact thing that we've discussed this evening.
So, one of the confusions that I have is, again, go back to the two-unit, both residential apartments, were it to be in commercial, how do you, how do you create the, the effect of having the commercial on the ground floor and the residential upstairs? Because theoretically, you could have a commercial on the second floor and the residential on the first floor.
So, a two-
It's not typical, but, again, how do you?
So, a two-family dwelling is different from an apartment situation. So, two families defined, this isn't verbatim, but it's, it's a building that has two residential units in it, period. There's no other commercial use or anything. So, that kind of building would not be permissible.
Because it's two, not one.
Exactly, yeah, and even if it had a commercial use on the ground floor and one unit up above, that would have to be in the right district for it to qualify.
Right.
If they decided to flip it and put a residential unit on the first floor, then that would no longer be considered an apartment by our definition. The apartment has to be above a commercial use. I don't know what exactly we would call that, because it'd be such an unusual situation, but it would be a rental unit of some kind on the ground floor with a commercial use above it, and that would not be permissible under the suggested language tonight.
Okay. So, that clears it up. I'd like to go to the second point tonight from me, which is, part of the original ordinance, which I think was essential for the purpose of keeping the STR as a single unit. And we all know that one of the biggest enforcement problems with short-term rentals is a lot of breaking up of units into one, two, or potentially three units within a single building, and making sure that the owner is not able to rent out multiple parts of what he's claiming is, is a single unit. So, we'll have a, I know there are owners of, that are trying to do short-term rentals that buy a, they bought a single-family unit, they divided it up, so they put a, you know, a kitchenette upstairs, they have a full kitchen and bathroom downstairs, a bathroom and a kitchenette upstairs. If they divide that property with firm walls, and now there's two absolute units, that's pretty clearly in violation. But if they just simply have a door that locks, they can rent two sections, and say, "We can divide the two sections off, and you can have two groups renting the same property." In the original ordinance, there is included in it the section that says, "A short-term rental has to be rented by one party who has one person sign the lease," and that needs to be guaranteed, to continue to be in the short-term rental, because that's what allows the city to enforce going into a unit and saying, "There's, there's multiple units." Very difficult to enforce, as we know.
It is difficult to enforce, and all of that is, you know, accurate of some challenging enforcement circumstances that we're, we're in the midst of. That provision is remaining in the ordinance.
Okay, so nothing changes about that?
Yes, nothing's changing regarding that.
Okay, thank you.
William Puffer is my name, and I would just like to give you a couple of points. I am from Old Town, Mr. Rowan is from the east side on Shippen Street. We have, we have coordinated on this as two neighborhoods in our presentations to you and in working with Mr. Smith, and so, there are not many people here tonight from- with Mr. Smith, and so there are not many people here tonight from the neighborhoods, but I just wanted you to know that both Old Town and then the Shippen Street area, a number of the residents have been concerned about this, and that's why we're here. One of the problems that we've been concerned about, and Mr. Smith has just touched on this, is the enforcement of the violations that have occurred since this became an issue. And initially, it seemed as though this was not being effective at all, but I think that that has changed, and I hope so, and I congratulate you on the issues that you have in enforcing it, and I hope that you do have the inspectors to go in, because there were serious violations with one, possibly two, property owners that just ran through the city as though they owned it, and we all, we both have examples, I'm not going to go any tonight. But to close, I would like to congratulate this committee on the work that you did, the ordinance that you produced. You really did a magnificent job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none? Do I have a motion to?
Mr. Polite, I think we concluded the Number 6, Other Business, section of the agenda. I just want to touch on the Number 7, Public Participation, in case there's anyone else that wants to make comments about other items.
I'd like to give you a copy of a statement I'd like to read.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission, staff and visitors. My name is Bill Hannigan and I live in the 300 block of College Avenue. With all due respect, I speak tonight about the proposal for the future use of the former St. Joseph Hospital. Again, with all due respect, it is my opinion neither disclosure nor transparency occurred to the extent deserved to serve the public interest. Commonly called 250 College Avenue, the project's developer is Washington Place Equities, or WPE. I witnessed the presentation to the Planning Commission of the revised final land development plan for 250 College Avenue on Wednesday, February 1st. After the revised final plan received unchallenged, unquestioned, and unanimous approval, I stood to depart near Mr. Douglas Smith, City Chief Planner. I asked him for a copy of relevant paperwork. He handed me his copy of a memorandum. Mr. Smith drafted the memorandum dated Tuesday, January 31st. He circulated it to the Planning Commission members and city officials. Copies were not then available to the public. The memorandum, in part, dealt with three points of background regarding 250 College Avenue. Of those three points, only two came up for discussion. Those two points, specifically reducing commercial space and increasing residential units, were mentioned in LNP's government calendar, which was published on Monday, January 30th. What the memorandum stated, but did not come up for discussion, was the third background entry. It stated garage parking previously proposed on both the ground floor and first floor has been consolidated to incur only on the ground floor in order to simplify and reduce expense in the building's structural systems. That third background point, yet to be made public as far as I know, floored me. As recently as December 7th, the final land development plan and modification request to SADO, or 250 College Avenue, listed 169 housing units and two floors of onsite parking spaces. Action taken February 1st by the Planning Commission conceded an increase in the number of housing units to 185. The additional housing units likely will boost WPE's annual income by $200,000 or more. Action taken February 1st by the Planning Commission conceded a shift of all but 3% of off-street parking spaces to the deck at 217 College Avenue, according to a letter from ELA Group dated January 30th, 2023. Free of the burden to re-engineer and accommodate the promised onsite parking, WPE likely saves multiples of $200,000. Concessions of $200,000 here and multiples of $200,000 there merit full public disclosure and transparency. It is my opinion that neither disclosure nor transparency occurred to the extent deserved to serve public interest. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Hannigan.
If there are questions from the Planning Commission about Mr. Hannigan's statement, I'm happy to answer them.
Is the plan meeting parking requirements according to city zoning?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Smith, the only question I really have, and I say this in part because I'll sometimes sit back here as we're discussing either this side of the street or that side of the street, is there any way we can get, like, for also the public's education as well as ours, like, a cohesive update on where all these projects are at, which each project is, and so on? Because sometimes I sit here and I'm like, I don't know which developer for which site we're talking about in regards to the College Ave projects.
Sure, we can certainly do that. Tonight, you know, this statement is regarding 250 College Ave, the main hospital campus, minus the portion that was previously subdivided off at the southeast corner for HDC, otherwise known as the Delp Wing. So the remainder of that roughly six-acre site or so is owned by WPE and proposed for redevelopment of the hospital and the 50 or so townhomes that would go around the perimeter of the rest of the site.
And do any of those entities that you had mentioned, are they also developing on the other side of the street?
So WPE also owns the parking deck across the street, which kind of wraps around a medical office building there, and is also a part of HDC's proposed 213 College Ave affordable housing project.
Okay, because like, I know that we have to look at each of these plans separately as per the SADO, I think, but it would be nice to get all of this information in one location where everyone can be updated on, like, the status of each project and kind of tie them all together a little bit without tying them together impermanently.
Sure, we can organize a comprehensive update. I think, you know, you've approved both of these plans that are, that we're discussing, and city staff, as well as Mr. Hannigan, has scrutinized the parking arrangement tirelessly, and we feel fairly confident, beyond confident, really, that we are fully meeting the parking ordinance in the zoning. That has been, you know, carefully vetted by our zoning officer, as well as the many designers who were involved from the private side, as well as Mendelley and myself, and, you know, despite the, you know, questions around transparency, I've provided Mr. Hannigan an extraordinary amount of information and answered, I don't, dozen or more emails or so over the last, you know, year. So we have tried to be absolutely transparent, nothing but transparent, in the entire situation. This particular parking rearrangement, just from my perspective, so the commission can hear this, there was virtually no change to the site plan itself. I believe that there were maybe three additional parking spaces that were added, or six, maybe, to the exterior of the building, so that the site plan changed because of some parking efficiency. Otherwise, what really happened is there were two floors of parking in the hospital building, one was turned into residential units, and then the ground floor parking was expanded in a larger area within the building, so all of the parking could be condensed on one floor within the building. It was all interior, it was architectural, we were provided plans that showed how many spaces they were providing, and that met the zoning ordinance, and of course, if that's not constructed, they would be in violation of the zoning ordinance, just as any other plan, you know, that we approve, as expected. So from a site planning standpoint, there was virtually no change. Same number of cars were coming into the site, you know, the commercial was eliminated and it was replaced with residential, so there was very, very little change in the parking that was required. So the number of parking spaces, sorry, I don't have all some math, it's in an email somewhere I can pull up, but the parking spaces, maybe Mr. Hannigan knows this offhand, changed somewhat, and I don't remember the exact numbers, there was a net gain or loss of what?
Can you say that out loud, Douglas, so we can hear the people online and we can hear?
Yeah, can you repeat that?
Oh, sure, Mr. Kajo was saying that he believes that there was a net gain of maybe one, or, and are you referring to the increase in required parking? Or, okay, there was one additional space that was required net, it sounds like is what Mr. Kajo was saying. When the commercial was downsized, that reduced the parking by roughly 20-some spaces. When 16 units were added, that increased, you know, and there may have been, you know, I don't have all the math, sorry, offhand, but I can certainly pull that up and I can forward you the same information that I provided to Mr. Hannigan. But, you know, our assessment is there was no change to the traffic study, there was no change to the, little to no change to the site plan. So the fact that it didn't feature in our conversation was not for any lack of wanting to discuss it, but just because it was completely unsubstantative, insubstantative from staff's perspective. It was on the sheet that you all got, I didn't get any questions about the change in parking
Just have a quick question regarding the parking and the calculations. Are you able to incorporate street parking into parking calculations in order to meet the parking requirements? I didn't-
Yeah, he said no, there's no ability to make the on-street parking a part of the zoning requirement, as the zoning's currently written.
Right, and that's not specific to this site, that's the, that's any development in the city.
That's throughout the entire city.
Thank you.
Yeah, when we do a land development, we always look to maximize on-street parking, we look for opportunities where there was no parking before and we can add it. In the case of HDC, 213 College Ave, they were able to add some on-street sites by closing one driveway. You know, in this case, we did our best to add additional parking along College Ave, the circle drop-off is being closed, there was some other infrastructure that was changed along the front edge so that we could add additional spaces there. We surveyed the entirety of the rest of the block. Unfortunately, this block has a number of challenges on other streets, the narrowness of streets, and the center landscape area on Northwestern Avenue prevents on-street parking there, so we did the best that we could in terms of maximizing on-street parking.
I just would like to add that Douglas and I have recalculated parking one by one.
Yeah, Mr. Mendelley said that we, him and I, calculated the parking one by one.
Meaning one, one unit per vehicle, or per space?
Well, yeah, we counted up every unit, all of the commercial square footage, we reviewed what the total requirement was, we went through all the floor plans, we counted every single spot onsite. The developer also provided us additional exhibits that numbered them all and clarified additional questions, I mean, because we wanted to ensure that we were, of course, upholding the ordinance, but also able to answer Mr. Hannigan's curiosities around the parking arrangement. And after a very elaborate review of all of it, we came up, we came to the conclusion that the zoning ordinance was indeed satisfied.
Douglas, I have a question, just for clarity?
Sure.
How many parking spaces were lost in that change or gained in that parking lot?
So, yeah, and if-
And no loss?
Okay. And I'm gonna, just because we're sort of spinning around the same question, I'm gonna just pull up, try to pull up the email correspondence and-
Whenever we have these documents published for the meeting online or wherever they're published, can we just make sure that the counts that you guys have are published with it? That way they're public record.
You're referring to the piece that was not in the LNP calendar?
The, what you're talking about right now, the counts that you did?
The counts?
Yeah.
Yeah, including that and the ad in LNP, you mean, or?
I'm saying when you publish the minutes to this meeting.
Oh, publish it, just-
Right, we published our notes or whatever for the-
Yeah, we published the minutes and we published the agenda for public viewing on ECODE.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that that is also published, so that way anybody can go and see the counts and so forth.
The full packet of information, yeah.
So that way there's no question that, it meets the standards.
Can revise, yeah, are we still publishing the packet online for, like, this packet that had our conditions of approval that the Planning Commission got? Is this being published on the city website? Yeah, it's, there are very few commissions that do that, in fact, on our ECODE page, there's not a single commission, not including city council, that publishes the full packet of information. Sometimes these are, you know, 100-plus pages of documents, not to say we couldn't, but what is being asked of us is something that no other board, commission, authority, or council itself is actually currently doing. I think that is a bigger question around, you know, how do we disseminate additional information to the public? And there should probably be a cohesive strategy around doing that.
Mr. Hannigan, any further comments?
I would just pick up briefly on what Mr. Dastre said about having a broader view of where projects stand and what they, what impact they may have, a timeline. The domino effect of shifting, and I'm taking from the consultant, their letter, saying that they're shifting all but 3% of the parking across College Ave, from the west side where this residence, multifamily residence is, to the east side, you know, you're crossing a very busy street, you're forcing people farther away from their comfort zone of where they're parking, and to be honest, the domino effect is, it will spill out into the neighborhood, it will spill out into curbside parking, it will spill out to all and every space in all directions. When we think of, I think of, the potential 500 people moving into the collective 250 units or so, you know, virtually within eyesight of my property, or on the other side of the block, catty corner from my property, you bet it's going to have a domino effect. And without a comprehensive look, without a concise update of where this multi-headed beast is, it's problematic that I can see. I have unfortunately been under the false impression since a time in this meeting room almost a year ago, in fact, more than a year ago, when I proposed to the Traffic Commission that the hospital lose a level of residential units and put in that second unit of parking, and I thought I achieved a victory with that. I sat, I stood at this podium and at a later Planning Commission meeting, and I wish I could find it in the- could find it in the minutes, I can't, but the developer, Mr. Weicher, was basically right here, we're, you know, arms length apart, and I made that same proposal that they incorporate two floors of parking in the hospital on the west side of College Ave and sacrificed a few units. I don't know how many it is, but that was my proposal. And he turned around and said, he said to me, "We're going to do that." And my response to him was, "I hope you may remember." I said, "You scored a point there." And from that point on, I talked to my neighbors, and I talked to anyone who would listen, and I complimented the fact that this project was going to make that sacrifice, just as HDC made the sacrifice of not creating an L, an L Street exit from their property. That was a small victory for that neighborhood. And I considered this a small victory, large in my mind, but small in the sense of the scope of 250 units coming online and 500 people coming to my neighborhood. And that's gone. And I'm, okay, so that's where I am. I had to really cool down after that February 1st meeting, when I read in this document that was not made public, which was not disclosed, which was not transparent, leading up to that February 1st meeting. I felt like the floor had been yanked from me. So I appreciate this opportunity to, to drill down a little bit farther. You know, I, my drafts of what this statement was going to be have gone through, you know, great sweep, because I started out at that point of how I felt February 1st, when I got home, and I read this thing. Missed the opportunity to talk to this commission, missed the opportunity to speak with Mr. Weicher. All that was gone, February 1st. And it just, you know, to me was maybe unhappy. Can you imagine?
I, I do find it a shame too that we are, with the focus on parking, one of the things that came to mind is, just a few years ago, they wanted to put a bicycle boulevard down Chestnut, which would probably eliminate a lot of the need for some of those people who are now looking at the possibility of living across the street from you to even need to own a car, because they would have that protected bike lane straight into the downtown. It's a shame that was taken off the table, because I think that would have really helped this big conversation we're having right now. It would have probably eliminated a lot of need for what we're talking about, I hope. I'm not sure. It's a little out of my purview.
Mr. Hanigan, I will continue to engage with you on this and provide information. I'm, to be honest, I'm still struggling to understand the, what we can do to satisfy your concern. We're administering the zoning code as it's written. I can't do anything more than that. I, I'm finding just, you know, some of the language here challenging, you know, 3% of off-street parking spaces, all but three are shifted to 217, that's false.
You'd like to see the letter?
What, what letter are you referring to?
The consultant that, that's why I attributed that statement to them.
I'm, I'm not sure.
ELA group dated January 30th, 2023, in its letter to the Planning Commission staff, said that shift of all but 3% of off-street parking, they actually used, reversed 97%. 97% would be shifted across the street. I'll, I'll be happy to show you.
I'm, I'm happy to take a look at it, but the plans that have been submitted and approved show 128 residential parking spaces on 250 College Ave, under the hospital building and on the surface. And there's another 100-
I didn't do the math, I'm not a-
I, I understand, but I-
I'm a layman, I'm not a zoning code specialist, and I respect those people who hold those portfolios. And that's why I don't say I like the number, I didn't make it up. It's from that letter dated January 30th. So here we go, January, just another small wrinkle here. January 30th, this letter arrives with the City Planning Commission. January 31st is this memorandum, which I say was not transparently handled, was not full disclosure at the February 1st meeting, and bam-bam, we have this change.
I do not agree with Mr. Hanigan's assessment. When plans come back to us, I will let you know, there might be hundreds of minor changes that occur on the plan. What I try to discuss here with all of you, some of you experts, some of you non-experts, is, is the most substantive issues, and that's what the developer aims to provide to you at all, provide to all of you as well. It looks like what is being quoted here in terms of the shift is related to change in traffic, and I'll, I will follow up on this, Mr. Hanigan, as I have all of your requests, but I don't believe this has any bearing on the parking that's being provided. As I've said to you before, you know, the residential parking has virtually remained unchanged on the hospital campus. There's, there's 120-
I'm sorry, but there's onsite and offsite parking.
Yes, there's onsite and offsite parking.
Were you saying that 217 is now the hospital campus?
I am happy to take this offline. I don't know that I can satisfy all of your questions this evening, but, you know, as a recap, there's 100, there's 100 spaces in the parking garage across the street. I'm going to use round numbers, okay, but there's 100 there for WPE alone. There's 217 in the whole lot. I know some of these numbers off the top of my head because I've been looking at this so much in our discussions, but there's 100 spaces there. Under the hospital building, there's 58. So now we're up to 158 parking spaces. On the surface lot, there's an additional 58. And then there's an additional 12 behind the hospital. You know, add all of these numbers up, I've given these to you repeatedly, Mr. Hanigan. I don't know what else I can do. And that does not account for the parking that is provided for all the townhomes, doesn't , it doesn't mention the on-street parking. We have looked at this very thoroughly, I assure you, and I've provided you all of the documents to demonstrate that this is meeting the zoning code. I, I do appreciate your concern and your diligence to make sure that we're enforcing our ordinances, and we want to hold ourselves accountable for that, too. I will look into this and I will follow up with you by email and ask them for clarification. Would you like this back?
I believe you have a copy, that would be my only copy.
We do, yeah, we do.
Douglas, will we also be updated with what your findings are?
Sure. I can definitely do that, yeah. And I'll, I'll forward you the breakdown in parking change too that we provided to Mr. Hanigan. It shows you everything that changed, the number of residential units that changed, and what the parking effect was, the number of commercial units that changed, and what the effect was, et cetera. And you'll see that there's a net gain of, of one parking space. So I'll forward that to you as well.
Mr. Hanigan, do you have on-street or off-street parking at your residence?
I have one off-street, and I, I buy a residential parking permit for both of my vehicles, just in case a visitor parks on my off-street site, and then I have permission and approval to park my two vehicles at the curb.
Okay, thank you.
Douglas, is there plans to allow the people that live at these new properties to apply for permits in the permitted parking zones on the street?
Residents who live in the multifamily, like, the, the new development that's being proposed?
Obviously, there's three, but-
Yeah. So, let me think about this for a minute. I think as we have done with other land development apartment buildings like Garden Court in the southeast, they are, I believe, not eligible for on-street parking permits, because they are provided the adequate parking, presumably through the zoning code. Multifamily buildings are limited in terms of the number of parking permits that they can receive anyway. So I think we award, we provide no more than, I'd have to double-check the parking regulations, like, three parking permits or something per multifamily, or building. So if there are more units, it's a first-come, first-served basis, I think is how the Traffic Commission and Parking Authority has dealt with that in the past. So the idea that 170-some residents would have parking permits is, that's, that's not a truth, that would not happen.
But of course, none of those would be eligible.
Well, I'm not even sure, I mean, if so, it's like three, but I don't even know that we would, that those would, I can follow up with you on that, too, and, and double-check that.
Because that might help alleviate some of the concern here, if that on-street parking isn't going to be available to any of those units anyways. They're going to be ticketed and or towed.
That's assuming the residential parking program remains in effect as it currently is today.
Yep.
It, it was put in place here because of the hospital originally. And just keep in mind that there's been a tremendous reduction in traffic and parking requirements from the hospital closing.
What, is it two-hour parking or, you know, timed parking between this hour and this hour on those streets? I'm just not familiar with the parking signs, so, okay.
I believe at 6:00 AM, this, something, basically daylight hours, two-hour limit. And there's street sweeping. Both are ignored. I, I actually qualify for residential permit parking because my property front, not my, the side of my property borders the reserve, the residential parking permit space. If I, my neighbor adjacent to me, going north on College Ave, can't get residential permit parking, because he does not have property adjacent to the permitted zone.
So College Ave is not permit-only?
No.
It's Chestnut Street? What street are you on?
Walnut. I'm at College and Walnut.
Walnut, right.
Walnut is permit parking during the daytime. But this is why many residents, you know, from College Ave, find the convenient to park in the 800 block of West Walnut Street. Their, their all, their spaces are all taken up, they turn the corner, here's a spot at the curb, boom, they pull over. And unfortunately, and I have had 30 years of experience at that location, give or take, and the, the fact is, when it was a hospital, it was ignored, street sweeping, permit parking, signage is there, but if, if I don't call the Parking Authority and point to someone who's abusing it, you know, they, they get away with it.
My street, there's nothing exciting happening, and I get ticketed every time if we get through my car and street sweeping day.
And where are you?
On East Ross Street, total other side of the city, but my block, I would like to have your block, where it is not at force so heavily, but-
I like to have my block, I really do.
Because in these streets, we get tickets all the time, too.
But I see it, you know, from a view of years when I had an opposite experience. And so I, I'm, I'm hoping, I volunteered last night at the Traffic Commission to be part of any public review of the residential parking permit ordinance that's underway. It's been going on now for more than a year. I understood it was going to be revised and presented in January of 2022. Well, we're March of 2023, and it's nowhere near completion or ready for revision. How long it's going to take, I don't know. So it does interest me, I volunteered. I thank you for your time, and all due respect, you know, you hashed out a lot of things tonight, you've given me way over the time I expected that you would allow for my concerns to be aired, and I really appreciate it. I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to adjourn the meeting.
Before we adjourn the meeting, can we revisit the approval of the meeting minutes? I apologize for my tardiness this, this evening, but under the current, there's, there's just a number, a numerical error under section number three. I can send this to you following the meeting, but it's regarding the unit counts of the, of a property, so I think they should be corrected and then resubmitted. Now I can adjourn the meeting?
My motion stands after Ms. Seifert's very diligent reading of the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion on the floor and a second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Meeting adjourned.
Uh, gosh, we didn't get to the financial interest form. Could you please fill those out and get those back to me if you're not able to do it right now? I just want to be clear, the form is not asking you to give me the dollar amount of your loans or your debts. It basically is asking who you, who you owe money to. So I just want to be clear, you don't need to disclose, you know, dollar amounts or sensitive financial information, but for instance, if you have a, have a car loan and it's to a particular bank, you would have to include the name of the bank on there as, as it's asking. So this-